This is a special meeting of the governing body of the city of Devine. It's the 30th day of August 2022 at 6:00 PM. We're here at the George S. Woods Community Center. All council members are present along with Dora and Denise from the City Hall and Rob and whatever. There's a few others here as well anyhow. Alright, let's go ahead and get straight into the budget workshop. I want to remind everyone tonight that the, I know we have a lot of stuff in front of us to discuss, but one of our main goals that we have to do tonight is to actually vote on a, basically a working tax rate that because that tax rate needs to be sent to Melissa, right? And it needs to be put in the paper that this is the proposed tax rate for this coming year. So that way people know it's not a, it won't be set in stone until technically, until it's adopted, correct. It won't be set in stone until it's adopted, but we do need to go ahead and we have, well, not do, we have to take care of that tonight, an actual proposed tax rate that can go in the paper. So alright.
So if I may.
Go ahead.
My biggest concerns in this budget are the, it's about $334,000 of totaling expenses between longevity pay, IT, which is $92,000, equipment rentals, $22,500, and all those might have a legitimate reason behind them, but I told them all here, office supplies, $50,000, phones, $109,000, and dues and subscriptions, $14,000. Help me.
What is your total on that possibly?
$334,000.
Are you doing with all departments? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For $109,000 for phones, I need, I need that to make better sense. We can buy everybody a cellphone. Hang on, I actually have the numbers here. We can buy every single employee a cellphone, have a few to spare, get them an auditor box, and pay for their bill for about $73,000 a year. So I don't understand how we're getting $109,000 for phones.
We have a team, Pete.
Okay.
And so we, all police officers, all public works have phones. City minister has a phone.
I have a phone.
And that's it. That's fine. So you have all the public works, all your police, and then the two admins.
How much are we paying per line? So I'm asking lots of tough questions tonight.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear that.
But that's what discussing the budget is about, is finding out, you know, where it's going and what's being spent. Because if we can save tax dollars, you know, that would be beneficial and it can go somewhere else.
And another one that I know will be unpopular is longevity pay. We can, we can hire another person on that alone. So I don't know if there's any other discussion on that one specifically. For IT equipment, I'm sure we're, I'm sure some of that $92,000 is legitimate, but $92,000, well, we should be the most technically savvy city in South Texas. And office supplies, like $50,000. I, I don't understand what we're buying $50,000 a year for the few offices we have here.
$50,000 a year?
Yeah.
Does that $50,000 a year include updating technology equipment like printers for office supplies? Is office supplies, yeah, does it include like technology, like printer services or anything like that? Or is it?
It is like, um, ink for the printers, copy paper, like in water and sewer, it's stuff that for the, to be able to mail the utility bills, anything to do with the bills. For office supplies, everyone has a certain amount in the budget for their office supplies and they have to stay, we make them stay within their budget. Last year's budget, we didn't, there was things that were put in the budget that we had no control over. So, but they, this time we're looking at it and they know that it's just the stuff that they're needing. Nothing like where they're just wanting, you know, to buy something just brand new. We tell them like, let's say in the police department, if one of their chairs breaks, their office chairs will be out, they're gonna need to buy one. So sometimes that happens and that's out of our control.
Right there, yeah.
Well, just the police department wants $16,000 more than last year for office supplies. I, I, I got, what happened there?
Yeah, they're trying to replace some chairs.
$1,000?
Chairs are expensive. You're looking $500, $600 for a chair.
But organically, when they're supposed to be out in the public?
That's, that's a separate conversation.
And we can, and again, this is for y'all to tell us. Right now, we just did the tax rates. And so that's for y'all to let us know, for us to go back to them and meet with them. And that's where we're gonna be telling them that there's certain things. We just did, we just did the tax rates, just to go in there, the different tax rates to show y'all. But they know that there may, there may be cuts that we need to do.
Okay, so I spent many hours for a night going line by line.
Josh, are you, are you?
I'm sorry, Josh.
Are you good with your presentation there?
Cause I'm, I'm not lost more time, but let's, I'm trying to get some more conversation.
Alright, Debbie, go ahead and.
Cause I had, I had a short discussion with Dora, but I had suggested, take the budget they gave us and somehow magically get rid of $200,000 because that's technically how much it is more, okay? And then we went mid-range on the tax thing and we should have a surplus of, we want a cushion, so to speak, for those things that we all know we have the emergencies during the year. Like we know something's gonna break or whatever. Theory-wise, this works, but it's finding that $200,000. So I went in search of, the police department wants $148,000 above and beyond last year's budget. They do, they do. I'm not saying we don't need to give them more money, I'm just saying it was a blast when I saw that. There's, on salaries, an additional $58,000, are we hiring another officer? Um, equipment, $19,000 more for them. Um, office supplies, $16,000 more. And you know, their uniform cost is going up $2,800, which is 40% from last year. And then of course this SRO, I don't understand the salary going up $17,000. Is that because we have to take over the entire amount?
No, that's because we went, um, before, they went before the school to talk to them about, um, so they, we, they pay, they pay a lot of his salary. So they pay anytime he works from during the school year, from whatever time, 7:30 to the school time, that the school pays for that and any overtime. So we only pay for, they pay, we get reimbursed from them.
So this $17,000 is not real?
Because y'all, y'all approved, um, it came before y'all, their contract to school. I don't know when it was, Corey.
I don't know, I remember seeing that, but I'm literally, I'm doing that, I'm trying to do that same thing in my head right now, going, when was that? As you're, as you're saying that, yes, that came before us.
Yeah.
It was around June when it, when it came to y'all, that y'all approved and it had on there the amount, his amount of what, what was, um, his total annual salary. But again, we get reimbursed from the school for a lot of his salary.
So it's technically not going up $17,000, is that, that's where I'm at. I'm looking at an additional $17,000 in the budget. This is just the police department, I, I don't, then we, the, all the software, cause you were saying IT, there's an additional, I wanna say $7,000 on top of last year's budget for software upgrades, whatever this is, $3,700 of it to admin. What was the other ones? $1,000 for health and sanitation, $400 for animal control, $6,000 at the library, and I think, oh, the software, $500 for code enforcement. So are we upgrading all our software? Is that why we're having this giant influx? Like what is costing us more this year than it will, than it did last year?
Okay, so I can tell you that, and I'm, I hate to bring him up, but, and Rob is here so he can speak for his department. Um, we can speak for all, for the, for the 420 one. But there's a lot of things and there's a lot of things that were, that they, when they met with John on the budget, there was things that they did not, that they turned into him, he did not put in the budget. So that's what they're asking for, what they asked for last year, there was things that they needed, so they asked for that. But they understand that there's gonna, I mean, we can't, we can't do, we can't do everything that they want and be able to pay the down payments that we, that we have. So we know and they know that they're gonna have to, we're all gonna have to be cutting somewhere.
Well, and then, okay, software was one of them, and that's above last year's budget, okay? So again, above last year's budget for animal control is $40,000 for a salary. Are we hiring a third person? Animal control. Well, there's $40,000 extra on the salaries for, in this budget right now.
Last year, they worked with, I think, they worked with one, right Denise?
He put two in the budget.
Yes, and they, and one was hired on October 1, when y'all passed the budget, he, um, he hired one. So they didn't start working until October, when the budget was approved.
The budget for last year was $78,000 for animal control salary. Now we're gonna be at 95, why? It's two people.
That's a pretty huge increase from that.
That's a huge increase for both of them if they're just getting the police chief and the lieutenant because they're over animal control, so a portion of their salary is paid by animal control. Okay, but wasn't that in last year's budget also?
No, John didn't put everything in.
Yeah.
So we're not looking budget to budget in real life, is what you're telling me? This is ridiculous because that's 40 grand right there. I'm getting real crazy, I know, I'm sorry, I'm not arguing with you, I just don't understand it. Why was it acceptable in last year's budget with the auditors and not this year? Like I'm not understanding, why is it put in this year's budget if it wasn't there last year? Cause that's $40,000.
Cause we, cause we told him that that's, we told him that like your department heads, they're split because they're split due to, because they're over departments. And so their time should be billed to the departments that they're overseeing. And so I don't, without going to last year's budget to his, um, his budget, Debbie, I would have to look to see exactly what he put and Denise, we'll, we'll check for you on that. I don't know what percentage he used for Chris and Candy.
Okay, another thing on salaries is Parks and Rec, the salary's going up $4,400. That's like a 45% increase on that guy, I'm sorry. That's, we don't have a full-time guy anyway, but, um, then there's a thing on the airport, I don't know if all y'all looked at that.
I'm ready to close the airport.
I have a question on the airport.
So the salaries that, that are, that y'all see in every, every department, again, I think we gave y'all that sheet where it's showing like where the percentage for 4% is, anybody that y'all gave us, um, y'all told us for $50,001, anybody that makes less than that is only the 4%. Anybody that makes, uh, I mean, is a 6%, anybody that makes over that is only the 4%. So those are the, I mean, so that's what's calculated in, in the salaries.
Are you asking about the salaries or are you asking about the entire increase?
Well, a lot of the salaries look like they're going up more than 6% or 4%. So that, in the bubble, something's not adding up. Like I, just pick one, any department, I don't really care, they're not adding up. And I know we go through this every year and every year it's, well, you and Denise, part of yours goes here, 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 okay? It still doesn't add up when you take you out of the equation. So I'm, I'm, I just know something isn't right, but I can't put my finger on it, on the salary thing. Again, over at the airport, I have a big question and I don't know, maybe y'all can answer this for me. Last year was like $50,000 was budgeted for fuel, which I get it, cause it was brand new farm, blah, blah, blah. Don't we sell that fuel and make money on it? Like shouldn't it at least pay for itself and why do we have $120,000 in the budget that's actually gonna pay for itself? Like why do we have it in the budget that's taking away from something else when it's gonna pay for itself? Or should?
Yeah, okay, so on the budget that y'all adopted on October 1, the revenue, um, he put $30,000 for the revenue of the fuel. And in the expense, he put $30,000 for the expense. So, but right now, we're over, we're over on the revenue, would I tell you, Corey, 55, something like that?
Like 55,000 on revenue or we're at like 52 and some, 52.5 on the expense side of things? So actually it is paying for itself, yes. What we've spent on fuel is paying for itself in that regard, yeah. And actually I'm shocked that we have sold 55, I'm not gonna lie, I'm shocked that we've sold $55,000 for fuel.
Also the repayments on the bond?
So what does next, bond stuff?
That was, that was paid for with, um, ramp grant stuff.
Grant? I thought part of it.
The farm fuel, the fuel farm, I mean, was paid for by the grant.
A portion that we had, do you remember what that portion was on that ramp grant?
Um, it's, it's $100,000 and so we get reimbursed 50%, I think we did three grants.
About the million-dollar bond.
That would have to be paid for by hangar rentals. That's gonna be a different line. Well, not a different line, but a different, a different thought process when you're approaching it. We do have the breakdown of that too, I don't know if they brought it with them. Do you have a copy of the breakdown?
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be all the way. I'm gonna do it to John, well, yeah, I'm gonna do this to, oh, you have copies for everyone?
Uh huh, yeah.
Alright, I'm just gonna ask that they don't mention any names.
Yes.
Um, I've got four.
I think we just made our schedule.
That's why I put it here.
Yeah.
What I would say on this is that you can look at it, just don't, and you can discuss it, you just don't mention any names if you're gonna refer to it, refer to it as hangar one, hangar two, whatever. That's the only, the only request. So that's that, what you're looking at there, Josh is gonna be, if you see where it's just hangar, that is where they own the hangar and where they just rent the property underneath it from us, or leased the property. If you see a hangar with a bay number, that's gonna be where they actually rent. That's where we own the hangar and they rent the physical bay itself.
Does this add up to?
I don't think this makes sense in some aspect because we have some individuals that are renting a hangar by the month, and then we have one that's just a little over like by the year. And so that's a big difference.
The one by the hangar?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one by the year.
To is a hangar number, but they're only leasing the property underneath. That is what, that, so say like the hangar three, it's 190 a year, that's what they're paying for the ground lease itself. He owns the actual structure itself. So, but say if you go down to where it says hangar five bay one, that's a hangar that we own as the city and they are simply, they are literally renting the actual bay and that's what they're paying per month.
Denise? These rentals, um, add up and equal the payment we have to make yearly on that bond? How much are we short?
It excelled. Alright, while Denise is doing that, I want to remind everyone, we have a capital outlay that, that is in front of us here, big, large. Um, in that is kind of the wish list, this is a capital outlet for the five-year plan. If you look at the priority, which is the very first line on that, and if you see where it says 2022, 2023, that means that that particular item was included with the proposed budget you see in front of you. If it doesn't have that on the priority line, that just means that this is the things that they either need or want and they would like to have over the next five years. So some of these we have pricing for because we know where it is, like the portable storage building for the, we, we have a price, we kind of know what that was. They're not asking for it this year, but we have a price on it. Um, some of these things we don't have prices on and of course those, that price cost line is just blank, so. Um, like, uh, Dora was saying, some of these things that the police department had gone to the, um, to the previous administrator about and asked for, that's some of the things that you'll see on this list that, that, yeah.
There's the mileage on this, uh, on these vehicles.
Ooh, Rob made now.
So I guess try to find a brass tacks, do we really need these vehicles? If they want, like animal control, it's a pretty new 2019, do we really need a new truck?
Animal, uh, animal control, uh, correct, 2019.
Another tobacco's in here.
It is a wish list, I'm not gonna get all that, I can tell you that right now. Uh, but this is what they're asking for, yeah.
Well, how do we separate Denise from the ones?
That's part of why it's in front of you. And you would need to talk to probably the departments themselves, like the department heads, so like Candy or if we're going with, um, like animal, animal control's gonna be Candy as well, um, or Chris, one or the other. Library, we would need, uh, pet by brand, airport, uh, we can, you know, like, we probably needed to speak to each one of those department heads and now they're here. We have Rob here, so we can talk to Rob for say, say, um, if you wanna ask about like, you know, going to the sewer waterfront, public works type situation? And we have the, you know, Dora here to talk about anything that would be your actual, um, your, uh, your other city items, um, that, that would be, but, um, yeah.
I have one question for Rob.
Alright, well, we have a question.
Mechanism do we have in place to track the miles driven by city vehicles and the times of that driving? One, to mitigate things that have happened recently, but two, to get a good account of where the miles are being spent, uh, whether water or parks and rec, et cetera?
Nothing in those, nothing in those trucks.
Alright, I see there are two backhoes on here. Do we need two backhoes or is that redundant?
We need a water, we need, we need a water backhoe first, that's, that's the 2007, I've got seven cylinders on that, on that backhoe, six of them leave, and that's our water backhoe. That's our, one of our money makers, so.
How about a street sweeper? I just, looking at our streets in general, I just can't imagine where we're sweeping them is that high of a priority.
Yes, you know, it's where we, we cut, we soft cut a road and then we fix whatever we're fixing, water, sewer, whatever we're fixing. Uh, when we fix it again, we go back over it, uh, we'd like to clean the street up, aside from just general sweep, uh, streets we can, but also the, uh, like the grass on the side of the road, that would mitigate a lot of, you know, instead of going over there scraping it manually would be trouble because the backhoe, we use that to scrape, it brings up the asphalt, tears up the asphalt.
Great example of that is, is areas where we do have curbs. Um, uh, what happens is those, those curbs, and, and I know Debbie deals with this a lot because in her district, there's a lot of oak trees and there's curbs. Uh, those curbs back up with leaves, I mean, when the, oak trees decide to shed their leaves and, you know, you have an eight-inch curb and there's a litter of leaves on top of it. Uh, the city crews literally manually go out there with a backhoe and will scrape each one of those curbs. If they had a street sweeper, they could theoretically come through and it has a vacuum attachment type thing too, to, am I thinking right, the sweepers do, where they can go through. It's still gonna be a process, but it won't be the same like manually with a backhoe and scraping and dumping and scraping and dumping.
Crap, right?
It doesn't work, it hasn't worked for years.
Did they use it last year? I said it's a piece of crap, I didn't say it was in excellent operating condition.
But it would be.
$1,000, I'm getting a little picky.
Oh no, though, street sweeper's only 67.
No, the sweeper is, the general, it's gonna be split up between departments.
Cause I saw that, that's on the budget under.
I know.
I see that.
It's concealed.
That was under, oh, the general five was getting 67.
Under the council, that's one of those things that, you know, you, we, we put these roads, these roads in, right? And we wanna keep it great and we say, look, we, we have to do a certain way and we have to have curbs and we have to have all these things and then all of a sudden, yeah, now we need a, now we need a, you know, sweeper or we're gonna do it with a backhoe to actually clean the very curbs that we require by our own ordinance.
So, so using the backhoe, and I'm just gonna use this as an example, to clean the, uh, curbs is why we got some curbs in my district that are non-existent because they were away from the backhoe going kink, 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 kink. So, I mean, we have a corner right now that there is no curb anymore, so. Someone very upset over that cause they, people drive over their yard instead, cause there's no curb anymore, so.
The, the reality is though, that's what, to have this, this is the equipment we have to have to maintain what we have. Because if you let the, the steps sit there, what happens? The weeds or whatever else, whenever I had a curb in front of my house, I could guarantee you that if I, I kept it clean most of the time, and I do appreciate when the city came by and cleaned it, but I kept it clean most of the time and yeah, you, I always was, was having to deal with leaves and weeds growing up in those leaves and they were eating into the asphalt because there was, there was conditions for them to grow and, you know, you have asphalt that's only, at that point, it was only 14 years old and yet I have weeds growing out of it because it has to be cleaned and maintained because, yeah, go ahead.
I know, um, we, we go through this every single year, uh, you know, budget of course, and, uh, and yes, you know, I agree with you, we gotta trim the fat somewhere, I'm not for that. Uh, and we get a wish list from primary department every year. And, but I'm, I'm a big supporter of the necessities that we need to have, okay, just to survive. I am definitely in favor of the street sweeper. I myself, I witnessed, uh, the utility guys or the crew guys actually manually with a scraper, scraping weeds off a curb on golf course.
Well, when you don't, do you do it there?
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, and this was like in the middle of July when it's, it was terribly hot, you know, and I thought to myself, is this the best we can do? Is this really the best we can do, you know, having these guys out there busting the behind, you know, sweating a storm and, and physically manually with a scraper doing this, you know, it's just, it just didn't go very well, you know, so, uh, I am for all the necessities that we need to have, absolutely. It's gonna cost some money and we need to. It's going to cost some money and we need to work with the budget, I understand that and I realize that, but you, we gotta have the proper tools so we can be successful. And it's going to cost, unfortunately it's going to cost, but you know, we gotta have the required equipment.
About this last year, when we went down his list? And we told him, well, we probably can only get one every year, like we can't do the whole thing. So this is his one for this year, but I get it. I'm not against getting a sweeper, I'm against all those other things that came up. I'm not against this.
She agrees with you.
I'm free, David.
Soap the waterfront, how about the two trucks on there? Cause, uh, total four vehicles, one, yeah? Right, total four vehicles, correct? There's, uh, two trucks on the waterfront and then there's a, uh, there's a Dodge Journey or something like that?
That, that's admin. And that's, and we didn't put years on that one Josh, because those are just again, for a five-year plan, that's not. What y'all see on the side for priority that has 2022, 2023, that's what's in the budget that they were judging.
Yeah, it's not there in front of the budget this year. So what you have this year, you're talking about vehicles would be the police general fund, those vehicles? And, yeah.
Okay, Josh, I mean, we're talking about, um, the, um, ITs.
Yes, yes.
Which, which?
I just combined them all, combined them all.
I know, but which one are you looking at? Because the 420, 02, 438, 66.
What were we at, what were we talking about? What were we at? The, uh, Dora's asking about the, which number Josh was referring to, the IT budget? Okay.
Are you talking about office equipment software maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm looking at one more.
Okay.
He's looking at that, that capital outlay. Is that? This stuff that's 2023?
Everything that you see that, that Debbie gets on priority that has on the side, 2022, 23 is in the budget.
For capital outlay, that's what I'm asking for. Down on the bottom of the first page of the budget, it says capital outlay 132. That's all the stuff that has 2022, 2023 for general fund.
It's included on there.
Okay, I'm just asking, make sure, um.
Yeah, on the, on the general fund side, the same thing would be on the sewer and waterfront.
Would be on the same.
Yeah. Cause these are, if I'm correct, capital outlay is anything that's a one-time purchase. Yeah, that, that's not actually a, that's not actually a recurring bill of service.
Yeah, uh, office equipment slash software maintenance.
Okay, remember the last, the last name that we had?
Forty-two thousand dollars.
That's not, that's not our IT person, that's for paying for the time clock. Where everybody pinches in, we have to pay a maintenance. And that is, um, in code, what I was showing you, that report that we've, how we do payroll, accounts payable, um, the assets, everything, court, that is, that is, um, Tyler Technologies. That's what we have to pay them annually.
Ninety-two thousand dollars a year.
Everybody, and everybody, every department pays for that. They pay for the time clock and they pay for that.
So you didn't want to run it working?
Yes.
So how much does that cost though?
Yeah, like I just pulled it by now, us under admin, um, time clock, maintenance, we, um, October 1, we paid 2,000, 20139. November, because there's different that we have, like for assets, for, um, for the general ledger, for accounts payable, payroll, for financials, utilities, those are different. And then the, the cash drawers that we have, the, the little scanner things for when they do the bills, um, the little, uh, receipt printers, that's all, that's all part of that. And so, for, for right now, year-to-date, for what we're paying, just on that, what year-to-date, what we paid is $3,000 and we budgeted 4,500 under the 420, which is admin.
Still not adding up. We paid $4,500 year-to-date. Oh, so the licensing is saying 4,500, that's.
So, it's split among all the departments.
Right.
So, so when you look at that line item on everybody's, that's what, that's what they're paying for. And, and yet, I mean, it is, I mean, it is, it is a lot for include.
Department is a different amount?
Or is it, is it a different amount?
Yes, it's different by, uh.
It's split equally in local departments.
No, no, there's different amounts for each department.
How many departments do we have?
Well, so, like PD has a couple of other, they have their online, they have card roll, so those are in PD only.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let this dog lay here for today. Uh, for next meeting, can I request a list of the features? Well, no, a list of the features the software, uh, provides. So, I'm going to do some internet research and see if we can find something that costs less, because that's, uh, that's giving me a lot of heartburn. Um, so longevity pay. Let's, we could, we could hire another person on this and if this, uh, stems into another conversation, it's going to be an unpopular one. But, I would like to see us give, and some of our employees are making like, they're just not making enough. I would like to see a 10% increase in our folks.
Just as we go down this road, just reminder, we can talk about the position and the, the title of that position, just don't mention names, because if you mention names, they have a right to be here. I know you know that, but just, just, we all wear, go ahead.
So, I guess to establish the base here, from my understanding, I'm reading, uh, based off census data, the median income for the city of Devine is, actually the zip code is 48,000. So that income is more than just Devine, like Devine's a little bit lower. Um, I'd like to see us cap all salaries at no more than 2X the median income, which would be 96,000. Which, I mean, our, our administrator slot would ask, also have to command less. Um, a 10% raise for all employees making below the median income.
10% below the median income?
Actually, I don't make the rest of the median income, give them a 10% raise. Well, I did, I calculated this out and we can save $300,000 by doing this. Uh, stay the same for those within 10,000 of the median. And decrease for those over 72, which, uh, was one and a half times median income. And so if we, within about $2,000 of these numbers, one and a half times, cut that by 5%. Uh, and we're making 2X, cut that by 10%. We're making more than 2 and 1/2X, I don't think we have anyone, it would be 15%. But that would, that would bring us to a point though, where we can cut our budget by, so we, yeah, we cut about roughly $300,000 for our budget by doing that. It equalized the pay, it's going to cut a few folks shorter than we'd like to, but it raises our base level of folks that are out there doing that labor, sweating their butts off, scraping stuff off the side of the streets to much closer to a living wage.
So it looks like you're talking?
Uh, we have a few folks that are being paid a little bit more. Uh, but I, I mean, I think we have a decent amount, amount of folks that are being paid a reasonable amount, right, right around the median income of the folks they represent. Um, and then we, we do have a lot though on the bottom that just, I don't think they're making enough. And to David's point though, we have to increase the amount, how much we're paying them.
We have people in there who are 26, obviously that person has not been here very long, 34, 39, 35, 31.
People won't mark that.
33.
So Josh, you'll have to repeat that till we can make sure to, to have everything in there.
Okay.
I got cap salaries at two times the median.
Yes.
10% or below median, uh, 10% increase for below median.
Written down here, I can read it off again. Cap salaries at two times median income, which are present, 96,000 dollars. 10% raise for all employees making below the median income.
You email that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be appreciated, because I know they're making notes over there thinking, oh Lord, we're not going to get all this right.
And, and the, uh, I guess the bigger woman here is to leave approximately $2,000 on either side of the number, just to make it, make it easier to accomplish.
Okay, and so the longevity, what are you, you wanting to do away with that, so that, I mean, we need to, that way we can make a note?
I would make a motion to, I don't know, should we do away or temporarily table it? Or the, the longevity pay, which is 46,000 dollars.
So, right now, for, we have, um, so if you're here with the city, we have four, uh, three, four tiers. So, tier one, if you're here, if you've been with the city one to five years, it's, it's a thousand. Okay, if you've been with the city six to 10 years, it's 1,500 that, that you're going to get. Uh, and that's normally at the end of the year in December. Okay, so if you're here 11 to 19 years, it's 1,700. And if you're here over 20 years, it's 2,000.
So.
That, that's what, that's what the longevity is.
Thank you. Asking, so I, I understand exactly what, because you're, you're, this would be implementing a different style of, of, of pay schedule, right?
Yes.
Um, which would bring, it would bring, it would bring about almost half of our employees up higher, if not slightly more than half our employees up higher to what you're talking about, more in line with what the median income is here in Devine. It would bring them up immediately too.
With the longevity?
No, without, without it, yeah, no, this would just be, yeah, the longevity isn't even included in, in what Josh was initially talking about, right? Am I correct in saying it wasn't even included, right, okay. Um, so that would bring them up immediately in the, in the next. It would bring a few people down, but most, like I said, more than half, it would actually bring up. So.
Or do you all want it to decrease that, that each tier?
Well, I was going to say, do you, do you, how, alright, so say like, or, or do you want the pay simply to always be based off the median income in the area? Because then you wouldn't have a longevity situation, you'd have, well, if, if next year we look at this statistics and next year the average is now 45,000 or 46,000, then everything would move with that. And, which would be like longevity pay, but it's not really, because it'd still get the increase, but it would be based on the actual market and theoretically the job market in the area, not off the actual time.
Yes.
Okay, I know that was a long way down the bus, but I wanted to make sure that I'm understanding correctly what, what it is. I mean, because the other way to do this would be to do a, uh, to keep the people where they're at, I suppose, but that's not what you're wanting to do, you actually want to move them up. But if you kept them where you're at and then kept longevity, they would just be capped at a certain rate.
Right.
So once they got up, but your actual proposal would be to move them up immediately to that rate.
Yes.
So, they don't even have to wait on the longevity pay, they would be immediately there and then our base salaries would, would follow suit.
People that make over the two times right now.
Just getting cut. Well, I'm getting a pay, pay cut. And let me be clear, this isn't to say anyone's, no one's doing their job, just based on the amount of money.
So are you ready to get, have those people leave us that make over that? I'm just saying, you need to be prepared because personally, if I was making that and you wanted me to take the cut, I would walk. Would you take that kind of a cut in your pay? And still be smiling and happy and do your best job?
We're already 11 people short.
I, I understand and that, that is the driving reason here to increasing the pay for a large basis of our employment.
David, go ahead.
If, if, I, I know that we use other communities as a guideline, uh, paying, uh, our workers. And, uh, we, we use that just so we can know that we're within the ballpark with our employees. Uh, we've done that for years and years and years. Basically, honestly, I don't like it. I want the city employees in Devine to be the top-paid employees in this district. I want Lidl, Natalia, Devine, I want all these other communities to look up to Devine and say, these employees are getting paid very well. Other communities get made, get paid and we lose our employees to other communities and you can't blame them. You can't blame them because they, you know, it's what it's about, it's, it's a monopoly, it's money. I want our employee to, to be the top-paid employees that we have. Have those other communities' employees come to work with us. You get better people to come and work for you, the, you know, they're more responsible and they're more dedicated, you know? So, that's, that, that's where I'm at with this, you know? But pay cut with somebody, that's going to be hard for some of these folks, you know? I mean, I, I don't know what you're trying to get at, you know, I just, I would hate to see it.
Uh, but, so we're all like, we'd be cutting four positions.
And those are positions that, do you really want those people to walk right now? You have to be prepared for that.
Okay, I'm prepared, I don't have to like it.
I'm not prepared for that.
No. Um, I mean, we're, we're looking at, uh, from 101,000 to 96,000, 119,000 to 75. That would be with a, a pay, if you have to step into a position and it pays more than your current, you step up to that position. So that would be one caveat there, uh, I think it's important. So if someone's having to take on a significant extra workload, they're going to be, uh, paid appropriately for that extra workload. Another one's, uh, 74,000 out of 70. So, again, these folks are still making one and a half to.
And they're going to leave.
Okay, I mean.
They're all going to leave.
That would be the individual's choice, you know, the thing is that when you have an employee that's making 119,000 and, you know, I know they do a lot, but that's why, you know, previously there was a separation of position that I think is vital. Uh, it's very difficult for someone to do five, I think there's, how many jobs are labeled just in that one, one position? It makes it very hard for that person. Um, there's one, two, three, four, five, six jobs in one position. Makes it very hard to be effective and efficient. And so, um, you know, that would be an individual's choice. But we have to give the other individuals that are also our employees the opportunity to be able to make a living. You know, and, and, um, it, there's, and let's not kid ourselves. Everybody's replaceable, let's not kid ourselves. There, we can do upgrades, uh, if people choose to leave Devine, which we hope they don't. But, you know, if they're that dedicated to the city, they're getting paid very well, there's a big difference. You know, uh, we have one person that's getting paid almost 120,000, even more than the city administrator position. And so, um, you know, that's questionable.
That is a count, when you hire a city administrator, part of that's going to go away. But I guess the question that I have is that, so you're going to penalize employees that have been here for 38 years because they've worked themselves from the bottom all the way?
And so let's look at then, um, what, and I understand, because experience does count for a lot. Let, let's talk about, you know, um, the professional development, the opportunities for further education, uh, you know, to move into these positions as a city administrator. I know that, uh, other public, uh, service or public entities do that for their employees, they assist them, uh, to go ahead and get their certification, to get their accounting degrees, to get, you know, training. Doesn't mean you have to have a degree, but it sure does help to be trained, to be able to do budget, to be able to do, uh, human resource, so we can have a human resource director, um, and things like that of that nature. And it's difficult for you, Dora, you know, because.
If you look at all the smaller cities, and this is something that we're, we're told by TML, they, they, we all wear a lot of hats. Because we're a small city, we don't, we're a population of 43, 27. So, every, I mean, if you ask Natalia, if you ask Lidl, everyone wears a lot of hats. It's your bigger cities that have a bigger population that, yes, I can tell you, a city secretary is just going to do just city secretary. But we, we split, I mean, we all wear hats, even, even my court clerk. I mean, she's helping right now with a lot of things because we're short of, of fat. So, I mean, everybody's wearing lots of hats, it's not just Denise and I that are wearing lots of hats.
And you're absolutely correct, in doing research, the only other city that has an employee doing two positions is Natalia. Because their interim director or manager resigned. because their interim director or manager resigned, and so, exactly.
But I'm waiting for y'all to hire a city administrator.
Well, that takes us to the thing of, so when we did this before to get a city manager, um, we found that a hundred thousand dollars is about where they get paid, period, or they're not coming here. So, I'm not saying there's, there's just a little flaw on the, on the capping it to the median, because no one's going to come do that job. Even a person right out of college is gonna expect in the nineties, see? And that's to start, that's to walk in the door.
I, I don't want to just come off as, uh, just being a jerk and saying people aren't worth it, but just looking at the budget, how much are people, uh, earn as a population? I'd make sure, just wanna make sure we're staying in line with, uh, civil servant and not being a tax farm. Um, just, am I gonna be comfortable looking at my neighbor who, I mean, they, they're struggling to make repairs in their house, and say, I know you're struggling against me, but, and I, I'm not saying don't pair, s- s- city employees well.
I don't know what that beep is.
Oh, uh, not saying don't prepare city employees well, but level it out here so that we can bring the bottom up a little bit.
Using your, your criteria, you would end up, we have about forty-two positions total, you'd end up increasing the, um, the, there's twenty-four of those positions, and some are vacant, some are occupied, you gotta go down the list, and I did not break it up.
All on itself here.
But, uh, there's twenty-four that would are below that, that, uh, medium income line.
Yep.
That you expressed, that thirty.
Yep.
Yes.
More to come.
It's gonna mount, yeah.
Will that be the majority of your call?
Yeah.
If, if, uh, you guys may be aware of, I mean, due to the COVID-nineteen, everything gets blamed on COVID-nineteen, uh, for several years now, uh, there are companies out there that are giving raises to the employees, because the cost of living's gone up, you know, gas, food, everything. And, uh, I know one particular person, I'm not gonna name no names, or organization that they work for, they did get a raise just for COVID. Had nothing to do with their performance at work or nothing, it was just for COVID, you know? And that's another thing that we should consider, with these guys, they have to pay for their own gas to get to work, buy their own lunch, provide for their families, you know?
You don't get it, sleep with the rest of your customers, I think that's...
We can, but we do longevity, because we can't do COVID.
We can treat it with a raise.
The school district, what they do is, they give a retention, so that way, they give us, uh, a thousand dollars in December, and then another thousand dollars at the end of the year, to, to hopefully keep their employees and, and not have to have a lot of turnover rate, uh, with the school district, but it's called, yeah, it's, it's called, uh, retention. So, I mean, we could possibly also consider that, so that way our employees don't leave us, they understand, and, uh, you know, a lot of the, the staff uses that for summer vacation, for Christmas, uh, and so, um, you know, it sure helps a lot. And so, that may be something to consider, uh, for these, the employees, to be able to, you know, working with our budget and making some changes, you know, that way everybody is valued at the same amount, and we don't want anyone to leave, and definitely, but I know it will be difficult for some, uh, you know, because you've had been here a long time. But again, we have to also consider everybody else, there isn't anybody that's gonna be greater or lesser than one, so hopefully we can work the budget to help those people, uh, that, so they don't leave. And we can be the best city that people want to come work for and with.
But in all fairness to Josh's point, even though I don't agree with the, I, I have to agree with Debbie on the upper end of your point, but, um, on the lower end of the point, Josh's, Josh's math would take everybody, even if you're making, you know, a person here that's making, who's been with the city for twenty-two years, making thirty-five thousand dollars, it would take that job position instantly to forty-four thousand, so it's not even like two thousand here or a thousand there, it would instantly, they would get a ten thousand dollar raise overnight.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, that's how the math's working, a raise based off our current salaries.
So you're not gonna actually pick them up?
Or I'm gonna take them up. Again, yeah, based off the median income.
Yeah, okay.
And, and that, that brings up a valid point there, maybe, we have to maybe readjust, uh, salaries on an annual basis, but...
So, this is where the project of taking all those forty-some people that we have working for the city, where the actual, I know this was a John project that never got done, but starting at the guy at the bottom of the total poll, what's his job description? And then, all the way up to the top, and then what they're making, what is the current value of the area, what they should be making, if you're saying you wanna go to the median, do that. Okay, this is a huge project to come up with, that cannot be done by the time they're done with budget, like, literally. Unless you wanna do that, because I personally can't do it.
Simply saying, give everyone, we wanna, I think all of us are agreeing, we wanna give our folks a pay raise. Um, so a street laborer is only making thirty-one thousand two hundred a year, this bumps them up to thirty-four thousand three twenty.
So that's the tip or stake?
Yes. So it's not life-altering, but it's, it still helps us bring them a little bit closer.
So you're saying the six percent that's in the budget right now is not enough for them?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, that means we're...
For, for other positions down.
That they get no raise?
Right, well, they're, one, uh, one, uh, other works go from eighty-four to eighty.
Okay, no, I'm never gonna vote to, to reduce someone's income right now, no, not, not one person.
Thirty-one to thirty-four?
Ten percent increase, yep, thirty-one thousand two hundred to thirty-four thousand three twenty, that's our current vacancy. One is, uh, currently filled thirty-three, seven, seven, nine, street foreman would go up to thirty-seven thousand, one, five, six.
And, and currently making?
Currently making thirty-three thousand, seven, seven, nine, would bump them up to thirty-seven, one, five, six.
I still like that either, I think it's true.
I mean, it's a ten percent increase.
Okay.
I think it deserves more.
Is anybody else in this room that works outside of the city getting that kind of raise? I'm ju- I'm just gonna ask, because personally, I don't make the median, I'll just, I'll just be flat and open with you, I don't make that median. And I'm not getting that kind of raise, and I haven't gotten that kind of raise in probably ten years.
You can look how much money I make up on the internet, it, I'm right around the median income, so, don't bust my chops, just not about not cutting folks down.
I mean, corporate-wise, I'm not talking city-wise, okay? Corporation-wise, you're not seeing those kind of, even though I know inflation is double digits and all of that, I get it, we need to be real. This is all we have, I want to compensate our workers. Yes, I would love for us to have maybe a minimum pay of, I don't even know what it is. Whatever we, our minimum is today, it obviously is too low, but it needs to be bumped up.
Our minimum's gonna be close to what the custodian makes, which is the twenty-six, three.
Which is what, twelve an hour?
I don't know what that is an hour.
I mean, it's kinda pathetic. You know, I think like for the water department, like, some of the vacant positions that he, that, um, that Rob has, I think we, we bumped it to, what was it, fifteen and sixteen? Yeah. Yeah, fifteen an hour or sixteen an hour.
Recently did that, like...
It's in this budget, for like the vacant positions.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause it used to be twelve, right?
Then that's why we have to be vacant.
So, so the ones that are...
Well, actually, we don't, we haven't lost people because they're leaving before other pay, we have not lost people.
Why are we losing them? I mean, we have to understand why we're losing them, so we can fix it.
We're down eleven folks right now.
Eleven, that's a lot. Does that, uh, Corey, does that eleven include the, the vacancies, does that include the forty-two positions? Or is it in addition to?
That's in the forty, like, all the posi-, I just count all the positions, actually, I'm a couple positions short, because there's some part-time employees, so really, we probably have about forty-five positions total, I did not count the part-time employees, 'cause that's a whole different, that's a whole different thing, so...
Chris lost one, which was in the street, right? The, uh, Robin, I mean, the, he just lost one, but he moved to Houston to take care of his parents.
Or about, yeah, the one guy who's just amazing at concrete, another one who could paint, like, Picasso, um, got these folks to be talented. Uh, are they staying, are they leaving, what do they need to stay?
Are they leaving or staying?
Right.
Yeah.
They're, yeah, they're staying, the ones I have, I mean, we all have skills that will really add aside from just the street department guy, you know? They, they can, they can paint, they can do all kinds of things. Um, and those are, those are good, fortunately, those are safe, because those are things we have. Uh, the ones with the water side, those are the ones we, that have, that have come along. Uh, one went, one did, lost one to the county, we went for a dollar more, or two dollars more, whatever, and then the other one went to Houston, so... Um, the thing that, like, the, the colleagues we have, because of, it kind of cuts back about two years, because all the, the, uh, certain age, the classes that we have scheduled for them, they had no opportunity before in any education in this department, none, that they have opportunity for now, that we're trying to get them educated, uh, which they're all for, and what they want to. It's just, you know, we lose one, it puts us behind, we get one, we lose one, we get one, you know, it happens, I don't know what else we do. Uh, so, you know, eventually we'll get to that point, but, uh, fortunately, they're, you know, it's, it's a, I, I can't say it's me or P, it's just a different crew that we have, where they, we, we don't have to stay on the deep end, they go, they fight stuff to do, to make the city look better, to be better than it is. Uh, and I, you know, we don't have to go chasing them around, you know, looking over their shoulder, they motivate, they motivate themselves, and, you know, whether we hope that or not, I don't know, but it sure is working. You know, they're calling, they're calling and asking, hey, what else do you want us to do? Can we go work on the community center? Uh, along with that, you know, but we're, it's just, just every, uh, right now, because of the rain, we all want a rain, and we got it. And how much grass do we got? We've got a lot of grass to cut, yes, so, uh, but it, it's there. Uh, I just wanna make sure they have the tools to do their jobs, especially in Angeles District, that sand, that sand is our dentist's over there, we try and clean up on, on Wilson Woss down that area, and we have to physically push that with the, I'm just jumping all over the place here. But, that's one of those things that I wish we could just push it off the road, because it's on both sides of the road, and it comes down, and it pushes, you know, fifty to a hundred yards down that road. Uh, of course, we can't straight that with the back, because I would tear all that, and of course, that's a state highway, but they don't maintain it, and we get to, and it's just a factor. But, um, like I said, the guys are, and they wanted me to work, I just wanted to give them tools to be able to do it, um, effectively and, and correctly, so...
So you don't think they need a pay raise? You don't think they need a pay raise?
Oh, yeah, I can afford those guys, I will tell you, the ones that I have right now, I...
They're just going to make it have a...
Yeah, yeah, but they, they, yeah, they, they need, yes, they do.
But they would fall under the six percent, though.
Yes. How can I word this? Would you think it's fair for me to, uh, cut, cut, make some pay cuts, so that we can bring those folks up a little bit?
I think all, you know, the, like me, I get, I do emergency management, I do public work, you know, I'm all over the place, I'm all over the place, yes, I've always been like that, since the police department, I've always been like that. Dora's been like that, there, there's, there's certain ones that step up, and nobody else does, they're there. And, you know, if you wanna take that, that's fine, remove, uh, remove, uh, emergency management then, hire an emergency management coordinator. Uh, if you want, you know, somebody to take care of, you know, other things, hire someone for those positions. You know, but we just, I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because we do other stuff, we do more so than others do, because there's a lot, you know, that have been around that, oh, yeah, I get paid for this, and that's all I feel. Okay, but, you know, we have an emergency, everybody, this is small community, everybody comes in, they don't come in. So we're, you know, we're, we're here taking, you know, steps forward, everybody coming in, not under the gun, but we are here.
If we have a, if we can improve our, uh, budget for, uh, positions, and actually break everything out per position, you step into a position, you pick up twenty-five, fifty percent of whatever that pay is, by putting that on extra hat, that then motivates the behavior of, uh, putting on multiple hats, um, and takes less than the budget, but still enables the motivated person that wants to really get after things to, uh, be paid properly.
And I mean, they, you know, they, they do things about, uh, don't be anxious to do things, you know, they're motivating themselves, and, you know, we're looking for people that want to go do things here with, you know, want this place to look good.
Yep.
Want to make y'all look good, to make me look good, to make y'all look good, we're good, everybody's good. But, that's what we, you know, that, that's what I'm striving for. Uh, I will tell you, you know, that, the one time where they, you know, they hired the lawyers they were hiring, you know, it's gotta heartbeat, they'll put them to work, then that's what you get. And that's what you get, I do, I always stand in their balance.
Um, okay, um... Could we get that, uh, more defined budget? And, I mean, I know we have to make certain decisions tonight, but could we break that down per position? And counsel, could we, uh, apply the same logic that I'm proposing here, but whenever someone steps in to take on an additional role, they take, we'll say, twenty-five percent of that extra pay, so people with five different jobs, they then earn that significantly higher salary, because they take on those extra hats. Um, and then we're not penalizing people, we're instead financing motivating folks to, uh, produce more, is that more palatable?
We'd be at an as-needed basis, is that what you're saying? Because that's in our contracts, is that, you know, you do your, what you're supposed to do, you know, which is the teaching portion, so forth and so on, but, you know, it's also as needed, and so, um, you know, if there's anything additional, you know, you get your contract salary, but, um, also, if, uh, you do need to step up because of certain situations, you know, it's, it's in the contract. But again, you know, what we could do is, is while I'm sure that you would rather have better qualified work ethic guys or, or people or girls under you that, you know, are gonna be effective, you don't have to look over their shoulder and pay them a little more, but maybe, uh, a little reduction, so you don't have to pick up all the other stuff, you know? And so that gives you your job description, you know, and pick in as needed. So, I, I don't know, we can possibly work a percentage, Josh, is that what you're looking at?
That's what I'm looking at, I think what you're providing is really, really close to that, just, there are certain positions that are five positions. So I'm trying, might best speak generically here. Uh, my department heads, would, would that sound, uh, more in alignment with something that would be powerful?
You're looking at twenty-five percent more for each job they do different. So like, though it is six different jobs.
Can't say names, can't say names.
But she's here.
So our city secretary is sitting in for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different jobs.
Right, so we're actually saving money from having just one person do seven.
That's not a sustainable path.
I mean, I'm just saying, but...
Our city secretary's been here for thirty-eight years, that is not a sustainable path. We have to, we have to fill those positions and actually fund and build a budget that allows to fill those positions.
We need to get the money, so they can be effective.
So your expectation is that our city secretary continues to fill certain positions?
No, I'm not, but I'm saying, where are you going to get the money that's gonna cost to fill those positions? Because we don't have it right now.
Well, some of those positions we never had, we never had.
Right, they, they've never existed, but...
When your first step in this, I remember, I don't do you work, that was just all processed and done, not to pay, I remember that one time, I remember that, I'm gonna act like... Man, oh, what is, um...
Robs?
No, Corinna.
Oh.
Gary?
Gary.
Yeah, I think that, I think that whenever Gary was here as, as administrator that one time, you are, I think you were only making sixty that one time. And it bumps you up when you took over the role in between, that was, that was...
You know, it's all due, Gary made me, um, he wanted to, you know, do a lot, he made me the assistant.
That's right, yeah, I think, um, so, yeah, so, 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 that's actually kind of happened, maybe not, you know, of course, in your thinking like that kind of concept, I, I don't think it's even taken to it, but it didn't happen, you know, I was at, for the secretary position, and then she said, uh, uh, she was like an heavy type assistant. And then counsel did it at the time, when I took over, she was the secretary. And then council did it at the time, we had took a portion of the secret service, A, and A two. So that, that's it.
I want to say, yeah, it had to be that long ago.
We've got eleven, twelve vacant positions right now. It's close to four hundred thousand dollars. Maybe dissolve one or two of those and break some of these out. Just we have a clear structure. That way it doesn't seem like arbitrarily we're paying some people huge amounts of money and other people nothing. But have clear structure. And to your point, that, maybe that's a later ask bottom. But we still have to come up with a way that we can't give anyone a pay raise if we don't adjust the, uh, the current pay.
So you want to take the motivation for those people, the department heads, away? Because they're going to only get a whatever. I remember one year y'all didn't get a raise. No one got a raise. I remember that year. I wasn't on council then. I was just out there in the, in the peanut gallery listening, but you got no raise. And then one year you got one and a half percent, and that was across the board. Like, didn't matter what shoes you filled, you got one and a half. Then one year they gave you two and a half. I think last year we got three, right? Was it one and a half last year? So technically, from top to bottom, everybody has sucked a big weenie on any type of motivation to get more pay. But you want to give a bunch of them.
The city minister has got to cut, pull, pull it from the job at five thousand dollars. I don't think they really want the job. Well, we're not going to, well, I, we're, they made notes. I know they made notes. We'll need to get back to that. We do need to actually work on because an actual, an actual, this is going to be the, uh, tax rate because if there's no, we've got to have taxes, we can't pay for anything.
You know, I, I, we need to know what the work to have on the longevity. What do y'all want us to do on the longevity? Do y'all want us to, to, um, to cut some of that? I mean, y'all want us to take from each tier, what, I mean, what? Or y'all want us to take it out?
It's a, it's a more beneficial.
Four.
It's forty-six thousand dollars. It's, it'll get us a little bit closer.
All right, and, and this is, I don't know, because I, I heard somebody say, I, I think it was Angela, but I think she was talking about different, like they did it twice a year, something like that. This is only one time in December.
So I think I'm making motions to suspend launch on the pad. No, what I mean, motions is a good direction.
Suggestion.
Okay.
We got one motion on that or just a direction to work on?
You still got to have one first.
Above the counter, we need to know so we can, yeah, if everybody agrees.
Well, wait, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm going to pay.
I'd say for this year's.
You do all longevity, but then increase the actual pay raise to ten percent? Or that, or equals to that.
Yeah, we have to pick.
We're only six percent. I believe that's about ten percent, but for those forty-two thousand.
Right.
So it's going to be, it's going to be over forty thousand dollars.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so it doesn't really matter. But honestly, for the two hundred thousand or over budget right this second, okay, I wasn't looking at salaries. I, I, I don't want to be pissing nobody off. So, but I'm looking at things like you did with the phone that would save money there. Or, or do we really need two police cars? Can we get away with just one this year? Uh, or do we need them at all and put them off till next year? That's thirty thousand right there. Um, what would cracks me up, David Bull was on, on council at the time. Emergency management department, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about how it's planned, okay? What I'm saying is, when we had to put this on as a department, uh, it was in name only. I went back and I read the minutes of, in name only, it'll never have a budget, we were told. And now we're at thirty-one thousand dollars and it's, it's in two years. So I'm just saying, in our reality, we have got a lot of buff going on in here that we don't need this year. This year. Maybe we will. I do think we need to sweep her. I do need, we do need to bump some of our employees. I've been, I'm afraid if we take a longevity pay away, just letting you know, a lot of people are counting on that at Christmas time, at the end of the year, like their little bonus, even outside of bonus. And if we're going to say we're going to take that away, there's thousands of two thousand dollars they don't get.
That's a thousand, fifteen hundred, seventy hundred.
That's what I'm saying. Whatever level they're in is something they're looking forward to at the end of the year. We're going to take that away and have a few people upset. I'm just saying, when you start taking pay away.
Everyone's upset because inflation's happening. They're being robbed by the.
Oh, and we want to take it away. So they got to spend more money out there, but we're going to take more pay away, so.
We can restructure it, like you're saying, you know, they're following this, the, the police cars, the emergency management. You know, if we take those fundings and maybe we can treat everybody equally across the board instead of calling it a longevity, like, you know, again, like a retention, so they'll stay. It may not get as much, I mean, everybody will be equalized, you know, and then everybody will get the same, yeah, sorry, Dave.
Uh, you're saying, uh, do the ten percent, but take away the longevity?
Uh, that's not, uh, that might, I don't think that's going to be enough. I don't actually know what the cost on that is. I do, it feels like everyone's trying to avoid a tough conversation now. I won't say that.
Debbie seems very engaged in that.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I came prepared too.
You don't want to piss people off to take away things. You're going to hobble rob's guys by taking away their tools because you don't have tough conversations.
No, I'm not taking away tools from rob's guys, but I am going to take away at least one police car.
Okay, so the cops aren't there to defend themselves, so.
That's their problem.
A tough conversation, right?
We have to remember it's a wish list, you know, and so possibly, you know, we can go with one and maybe, you know, make both parties happy, right?
Shade here, but we need to find two hundred thousand dollars and sweep it away. Like, somebody's got to make the, the tough calls.
So, so tell me when I did that one, the ten percent, you were, you were.
Do you want us to go back to the, um, department heads and, and go through their budget and see what, do like what y'all, what like y'all are saying, the different line items, what can be cut?
I was hoping we were going to get that tonight, but, but, yes, we need them. Maybe we need them to make their first cut. Maybe they'll cut more than two hundred thousand. Then we can all do the happy dance and not have this discussion. And then my blood.
I'm in agreement. If we could get an itemized budget as to what, you know, they can cut and what they want to keep, then we have a clear understanding and see everything and just go line, line item. Okay, this is what we agree on and this is what we debate on, so.
It sounds like at the next meeting that the department heads, all of them, probably need to be at this meeting. That way y'all can ask each one. At the moment, Josh, do you want to go ahead and still see if there's a consensus just to, um, suspend longevity pay? Are you okay with waiting until we talk? All right. Is there a consensus at the table by, I don't know? Uh, content on, uh, suspending longevity pay. We're seeing if there's a consensus. Consensus. So, uh, we're going to do a consensus by vote. It's not actually anything legal, but just a consensus by vote. Who's in favor of, 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 of suspending the longevity pay? Okay. Anybody, who's in favor of keeping it as it is until we get to a later date? All right. So Dora, we're going to keep it as it is until we actually have, we can talk to the department heads. To suspend, uh, council pay. I would say it was twelve thousand, something, twelve thousand and change. It's not that, yeah, taxpayers. Sure.
If I'm in the IRS, you're more than welcome to pay as much as you want.
It's not the taxpayer's responsibility to subsidize our philanthropy.
I don't know about y'all, but mine goes to the community.
It's not the taxpayer's responsibility to subsidize our philanthropy.
Okay, then there's all that money that's not going to go to the charities that it goes to right now.
Stand taxpayers' handbook or pocketbooks.
Then. I'm not even going to go there.
You're more than welcome to donate that back to the city if you want to, Josh, but I'll leave that to each person.
You can play Trump. Yeah, give your money back to the city. Give your paycheck back to the city.
Okay, so we're going to talk about the property tax. This is, this is the only one that I really have something to say on. Um, all right, uh, because of what I'm getting back from, from citizens. Here in front of you, there's this. All right, so this is the breakdown all the way from nineteen eighty-three. Dora, Dora keeps track of this. And, um, we get one of these every year, basically, at this time. The, the, you can see the year, you can see the tax rate. So in eighty-three, we are at point seven five. Uh, we've dropped as low as point five one one oh. That was back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty seventeen. Oh, sorry.
Yes, you're right.
There's a five one, oh, sorry, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
We dropped to those five, yeah, in twenty eighteen. Um, I know that just, uh, we talked about, you know, the early two thousands as we moved through those. I know that that was a discussion back a couple of years ago and kind of how, because we were, at that point in time, we were, we were in the red, if I remember. We were losing money. And that is, that's going to be your, all the way from the late nineties, like ninety-nine, even two thousand, all the way to the, to, basically when it started dropping in two thousand and five again, there was, the city was upside down. Um, I don't know why, but it's, it's fine. It's, that is, that is beyond, beyond my time here, so. Uh, but if you do want to find out, the council members who were on there, there's still some of them around. You're more than welcome to ask. Uh, uh, but anyways, the, uh, so what we're looking at here is on this sheet now with the actual budgets, the, the actual, um, breakdowns. Uh, the current year-to-date, um, tax rate, I'm just going to kind of go over it again. Uh, what, what, we're living in right now, right? It, the, the valuation of Divine was, um, two hundred and twenty-eight million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Um, with the current new values, um, the, the city Divine's worth, um, two hundred and seventy-four million, one hundred and, uh, nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, uh, which means that the city grew in value, grew in worth, uh, about forty-five million dollars, forty-five point three million dollars year over year. Um, there's a couple of different tax rates there. Uh, there is your current tax rate, uh, which is the, um, five two nine eight. There is a no new revenue tax rate, which would be four five two seven. And then there's the split the difference tax rate, which is four nine one three, or approximately, I split the difference. This is where I'm getting most of the, uh, feedback. And then this is, people are done with, with the, the every-year increase, especially this year increase. Uh, the, 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 and it's not just the city. It's, it's, it's overall. The increase, we're not talking about the increase on taxes. We're not talking about increasing taxes at all, or the, the tax rate. It's the increase in valuations. Um, and I don't disagree with them. I mean, some of these people, we had somebody stand up in council meeting last council meeting whose tax rate went up basically a, a hundred percent or whatever year over year. Um, and lots of properties, if you look back, not just year over year, but if you look back over, say, five, six, seven years, you will see a hundred percent tax rate increase from, from, say, seventeen years ago. So just in that seven to ten years, their property there, what they're paying has gone up double. Their value has gone up double. Um, if, and that, that's where they're upset. It's not just, they're not, I hate to say they're, they're not upset with the city, but the city's getting lumped into the larger tax bubble that ever, everybody, the schools going up, the county's going up. The, the appraisals went up, so everything's going up, right? Um, and it's up to each one of those entities to actually adjust their tax rate accordingly. And we, us as well. Um, as a reminder, I mean, everybody who knows who sees their tax bill here in Divine, your, our city Divine tax is only about a quarter of your tax bill. The half is about, or about half is, is school. The other, the other twenty-five percent is going to be your county and your emergency service districts. So if we keep our current tax rate as it is, at the, at the five two nine eight, uh, that would give us about two hundred and forty thousand, um, in revenue. Um, that's an increase. And I, I know taxes aren't done this way, so bear with me. But that would be an increase of fifty-five dollars per every single person in Divine. Um, you add on top of that the county, that, another fifty-five, or that, the county emergency services, another fifty-five dollars. And the school would be about a hundred and ten. That means that every single man, woman, child in Divine is paying an extra two hundred and twenty dollars just this year compared to what they paid last year in taxes.
If we stay at the same rate.
If we stay at the same rate, yeah. And that's, that's, and I realize, like I said, ours is only the fifty-five, but that's how much they're paying just collectively year over year per person. I realize taxes aren't done that way. Certain people have been hit with double. Certain people got hit a couple of years ago. It just, it's, it's not done that way, but there's no easy way to break that down of how, oh, well, this person lives here and their taxes went up here and they pay this much. No, no, no. If you just look at it from an overall, it ends up being, because, and even businesses, they pay taxes on their property, but those taxes obviously get passed on to the consumer. So it's going to get passed on to the consumer. But if you just spread the butter evenly, it ends up being an extra two hundred and twenty dollars per person extra just in one year, just to live in Divine Texas.
This is the ask that council, excuse me, uh, would there be a problem if we stayed the current rate? Do you think that would work for us? Or should we increase or decrease?
Sloppy, I, uh, there's just, there, there's a lack of detail in where we're spending our money. We're simply exacerbating existing problems by not really just taking into this, how much we're paying AT&T, for example. And we really need to spend more time and calling them up, hey, get this bill down. Or the IT stuff, ninety-two thousand dollars, hey, get this bill down, or we're leaving, find some alternatives. Um, until we get to that, I, that's, that's my reason for not wanting to increase taxes at all. In fact, no new revenue, personally. If we're going to increase, uh, tax rate, or even say the same tax rate, but increase revenue, um, max it out so we can throw a bunch of money into streets and stop stealing from the county and actually get roads paved and then actually bring in revenue because people want to live here because it's a nicer community.
Well, in all fairness, I pay county taxes too. If they're not paying my street, then I don't know what's going to happen.
Why, why talk, Jared, Jared called me over. He said that he can either do zigzag or he can do a county road. He can't do both. So we're literally stealing from the county this year to get our, uh, our road paved. I'm not stealing from the county. I pay taxes. I live in Divine. I'm not stealing from the county at all. We're wasting their time and their resources. I know. I paid for those taxes. I, that's, Jerry Beck is my county commissioner too. He's not just for the county. He's for the city of Divine. But he can't pay the county road because maybe he's going to pay the city road. Well, he represents people in Divine too. He needs to make a choice. I think that goes to a point where we need to start budgeting for an actual paving company instead of a county.
So you think? I think we ought to maybe possibly look at that as an option and then look at what's going to be most beneficial for the citizen. Because we all pay taxes here, you know, and so, yeah, and so maybe we should look at that, Josh.
Get out of a lot of problems or we have some uncomfortable conversations and cut a lot. I just don't like the mushy middle ground. That's, I guess, that's what I'm trying to get at.
As you say, if we keep it at a current rate and we go back and, and, and trim, some of these, we might be okay staying at the same rate.
We still have to trim two hundred thousand dollars off this budget.
Ask for no new revenue.
No, for any budget, two hundred thousand dollars needs to disappear. Y'all don't remember, this year, this budget that we had, what did, was it nineteen thousand dollars we had in a surplus when we started? Was it five? Okay. Which was gone in the first three weeks. Okay, no. Literally, we had something break and it cost five thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, something silly, and the entire surplus was gone in three weeks.
We can't do this. We can't do that.
And, and prior to recent, right, prior to that, um, and I guess it was the same year I came on, was the last year that it probably was. There were surpluses. There were multi-hundred thousand dollar surpluses every, every year for the few years leading up to that. So that, that existed. And like I say, it was existed, I guess, in the year, the first year I was there as well. So we have to have a surplus to be able to cover the, 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 uh, the unknowns.
So, so, so let me, if, if the department had to go back and, and, and trim the wish list, you think that might add up to where we're short?
A hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, if we keep the same tax rate, which still increases the bill on a citizen.
Okay, so, if we have a no-new-revenue, and they cut two-hundred thousand dollars off, we'll have four-thousand dollars, uh, surplus. If we go by this budget right here, uh, oh, the four-five-two-seven, if we took four-hundred thousand off, or two-hundred thousand, oh, I'd love to take four-hundred, uh, two-hundred thousand off of this, um, we'd have a four-thousand dollar surplus, meaning, don't anybody sneeze, don't anybody need cough drops, because we will not have a balanced budget. That's at the no-new revenue. At the fifty-two-ninety-eight, the current revenue one, I honestly didn't keep, I didn't bring my page, so give me a second with the calculator. Uh, so at the five-two-nine-eight, which I don't have that, but what's the budget?
Five-two-nine-eight, we would have, uh, a hundred-and-forty-six thousand extra surplus.
Let me see, what?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen?
Down here, fourteen thousand, so we'd have a hundred and, or, almost a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars surplus at the current tax rate.
If we remove the two-hundred thousand?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, she's saying, you would have a two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand surplus. If you remove two-hundred thousand, the five-two-nine-eight.
Fourteen, you're right, I was subtracting fourteen instead of adding. Um, yeah. If we had a, if we went in the middle, the forty-nine thirteen, we would have, um, what, did I have this, ah, I did write that one down. I didn't bring my glasses, sorry. We would have a surplus of a hundred-and-nine thousand. Cutting two-hundred, we would have a hundred-and-nine thousand surplus, going in the middle.
We haven't agreed to cut anything tonight. We haven't agreed to cut anything.
No, but they're gonna go back and tell the department heads to find two-hundred thousand dollars to cut. Get the scissors out, baby, cut, 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 cut. But if that's, what I'm saying is, if we can cut it, going in the middle, so we're not taking as much, we're not costing our residents as much money, we can do this. But if we don't cut anything out of that budget, we still can't do it, even if we kept the current rate.
What's your recommendation?
I wanna cut two-hundred and I would like to go in the middle, and then we'd have a hundred thousand, around a hundred thousand.
Are you saying with the tax rate of the forty-nine thirteen?
Yeah, that's the middle tax rate.
The middle tax rate. Then we'd have a surplus, but it only works if we cut two-hundred thousand off this budget.
And we have to turn it into something so they can work with it.
We have to let them know, 'cause that's published in the paper. Uh, but like I said, the reality of those people are upset, that's the feedback I'm getting. They're upset with the whole situation, they're upset with the, the county, they're upset with the, the school, they're upset with us here at the city, they're just upset because it's like, how, how much more? I mean, you know, even, even though they're, we're getting ready to vote on the, the, where they freeze the tax at sixty-five, it's like fantastic, except our taxes went up a hundred percent in the past ten years, so it doesn't do us any good.
It wasn't a hundred percent.
More than it was ten years ago. So, uh, thanks, but a little, a little too late, so.
So, Debbie, just so I'm clear, you're proposing the, uh, four-nine-one-three?
Uh-huh.
And then that way, uh, we can hold it that, it'll still reduce it from the, um, five-two-nine-eight, and so, um, we're not gonna make everybody happy, but at least we'll have that cut, uh, and, um, allow us to, again, trim the budget with the department heads, and have an itemized, so that way we have an understanding where the money's going.
The way we can do it though is to cut that two-hundred, like, it has to be done.
Because that's what Angela is saying, she was okay with the cutting that, that money as long as she hasn't itemized, so she knows what, where am I correct? I don't want to put it too now, but I'm sure she's saying that's what your aim, okay.
So that way we have an understanding as to what the needs are for the department, but yet, um, you know, when we have the tax revenue, we, again, you wanna cut, like, maybe at a halfway point, uh, instead of the, um, to have the reserve, right?
Yeah, I agree. And that's the idea we did last year, or, and it's not just last year, it's been multiple years that we haven't.
Right.
We, we need, I mean, I can't, I can't go in there and say we need, uh, ten percent reserve, which would be like four-hundred thousand dollars, I think that that's, that's, that is a lot, but we, a hundred thousand dollars, that would be, you know, a two-and-a-half percent, I mean, it'd be something.
And, and we'll be in the red, you know, so that, that may be, yeah, I think...
And with these...
Well, no, it's happened before, something goes kavoom.
Something always goes wrong.
Right, and, and it costs thirty thousand dollars, or it costs fifty-two thousand doll, I mean, we've been in the red for so long because of not being able to budget for an emergency.
As a reminder, our orders did tell us, we've got to get this turned around.
Yeah.
So, they didn't penalize us, they didn't do any of that, but they did, they did mention, I don't remember their exact wording, but that, the fact that we've gotta get this, that probably was their exact wording, but, yeah, um...
It's a good start, and it's such a good start.
Debbie, I, you know, I, I see your point, and I agree with you, I mean, if, uh, if you wanna go that route, if, if the council agrees with that, I mean, at least we get some idea. I know there's a lot of things to be considered, but...
I mean, it's ninety thousand dollars difference to the city, revenue-wise, to go in the median.
But people will know that we're actually trying, and actually, we are doing, you know, as council, to try to, to ease the, the pain.
I think that, you know, hopefully, something will go wrong inevitably, but at least we'll have money to take care of that, and then we can also build on that, you know, and start, and start building the, the funds, so, yeah.
Uh, totally one-hundred percent. It might give us a little bit to help the salary plan.
Well, at the moment, so, at the moment, we actually, I guess, have three-on-three here at the moment who agree with, uh, the forty-nine thirteen. Do you wanna have more discussion, or do you wanna go ahead and move forwards with a, a vote on this, to get a consensus if we're okay with the forty-nine thirteen?
What, what are your ideas, Josh?
Let us know.
What do you think?
Mushy middle, either max out the tax rate increase and make meaningful change, get after debt, um, and definitely, streets are, streets and debt are neck and neck for number one for me. Um, I, or it's no new revenue and, we've already agreed to disagree on that one. Um, so, uh...
Oh, no new revenue? We can't even make it, and, and do a six percent increase, so, like...
Debbie, comments? What do you feel on this? I know you've been, you've been listening, I see you over there, what is your feeling on the, the, which tax rate do you think is the, the more viable option, you're thinking?
I like the forty-nine thirteen. I mean, it shows that we are trying to lower, and we're trying to do something, you know.
Yeah, thirty-six.
But all that depends on how much we cut, too, I mean, if we even get close to, you know.
Point, at the moment, the way that, what we have here, what we have there, it doesn't matter, we're not making this top number either.
Right.
So, the, the departments are gonna have to cut.
Be no matter where we put it, so...
Um, if we do, this will be the lowest tax rate we've ever had, always since nineteen-eighty-three.
What I do like is that, we, we put it out there, the citizens are gonna realize, like you said, that we're trying.
And they need to, and they need to know that we're working for them, I understand their frustration, like I said, I wasn't, I have much to say on the other, while I discuss them, this is the one I'm getting feedback on, is, we're just, they're just so, and I, I understand, 'cause I've watched it, I've pointed it out, you know I pointed that, I have, I have argued for years that there's been things fishy with the way our appraisals work in Divine. Uh, I've argued for years about that, and, um, and this is where we're getting, the, the people, it's not, uh, who, who've come to me, who've, who've mentioned, they, they're just, they're just frustrated, they're frustrated with the entire thing, they're just like, how much more do you wanna tax us?
I have, I have a lot of people in that district too.
Well, I think your district got hit pretty hard.
They did, and they were very upset, you know, we did have some of those over a hundred percent valuation increases, and they were like, I haven't done anything to the property, you know, I'm elderly, how, you know, they, and so, it was very distressing for them, and, and I feel for the individuals that are having to do that. And also possibly, uh, I'd like to make a suggestion, if it's feasible, to renegotiate, like, AT&amp;T, all those other service contracts that we have, so that way we can get better plans, and we can get, uh, you know, costs down, uh, especially, you know, services that, um, you know, we can see that it's viable to do that.
So, something I'd like to propose here, um, depending on what you can cut out of the budget, um, I guess I'm willing to meet in the middle for maintaining the tax rate, if we can also budget and position for an efficiency manager, uh, someone, Linc Six Sigma sort of thing, find efficiencies, build processes, and, um, identify better products we can, and services we can leverage the city to reduce our budget next year. So, what process can we implement? What products can we get to reduce our costs?
Wait, wait, what tax rate are you wanting to do that on?
Maintain the current tax rate.
I figure about a hundred thousand dollars for an efficiency, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for an efficiency manager, 'cause that's the difference.
Well, the, the whole, the whole surplus would go to that.
They'd have to pay them that, we wouldn't have to. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to pay them the whole thing, for, you know, it would help us at least, um, start, start increasing our, we'll keep us in the block, an increase.
Do something that's actually fixing the cost.
How much do you think those experts make?
Uh, those are, those are folks that are making a hundred and five, hundred and fifteen.
Exactly.
So, yeah, all of it, that's all.
All of this surplus would go to...
Yeah, then it would go to...
Not cutting fat, anyway.
No, that's with cutting the fat.
Yeah, we still have to...
Okay, so we, we have a universal agreement that, that, or semi-universal, I won't say universal, uh, forty-nine thirteen is being the tax rate, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion, but, uh, like I said, we'll hold it like a real motion, even though technically it's not a, but that way they have something to go, go, Dora, do we need to have it as a real motion, or can I just have them do like I did before?
Um, I think she's gonna agree to...
We need to have a real motion, okay, we're gonna have to have a real motion, so do I have a, um, do I have a motion to go ahead and, and, uh, move forwards with a tax rate of, of, uh, forty-nine thirteen?
I'll make it.
Motion by Debbie, second by, uh, Mr. Espinoza, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? There. Motion passes. Anything else on this budget workshop before I close it out and we go to informational?
I mean, uh, just, yes, yeah, well, we have, water, street, sewer department heads here, can we work on that, since they're here now?
Uh, we can ask them, 'cause I know they haven't come prepared.
Well, on this, on the sewer, do y'all, do y'all want us to go back since that we had a deficit as well? To, to cut?
Have to, although I want them to keep their sweepers, well, the public works, yeah, the streets.
Yeah, the street is split.
They're splitting it to everybody, though, so, but I want them to keep that.
You're probably gonna need that backup lift station, that's for sure.
The lift station situation's iffy, well, you know, I think you were at the meeting when we, when he explained what the sit, the situation was over there at the lift station.
No, just a couple of weeks ago, I think I saw him there.
Still working at the moment, but, yeah.
Um, we can, we can ask, or I can, um, do you feel prepared enough tonight to be able to go over the, the whole public works, or do you want time to prepare and come back at the next meeting?
To cut, to cut anything right now, yeah, we actually, until, if you pull those two trucks, we can make you for another year, the two, uh, the two pickup trucks, we're replacing two of the nineteen-ninety-seven, ninety-nine Fords, I mean, we're gonna do with them, we're, 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 it's just a accessory, the backhoe and the sweeper, so.
How much are we seeing there?
Seven, right there.
That's in the, that's the...
Yes! You get gold stars!
Hey, we need to have an auction, that would...
That's a good thing.
I know you guys are extremely busy, though, but, I mean... Okay. What else did you have to look at on that one?
I'm gonna, that was gonna be...
Oh, you just went ass on that, on that. Man, you hit, that was good. Flipper already got seventy thousand, wanna go to the rest of the table?
Flipper did a good job!
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
So that's one-thirty.
Um, at some point in time, while we're doing this, I don't know the easiest way to do this, maybe it would be to bring the vehicles that we're thinking about replacing at the next meeting, if we could park them out here, and that way council could actually look at them. And that way they can, council can get them, 'cause it's too much work for us to all go to different places. If that's possible, if we could just maybe, instead of bringing those normal vehicles, bring those vehicles for that one meeting where we can just visually see them.
But if he's taking those away, we don't have it, it'll be with the police department, and, and that's gonna be...
That council needs to see those vehicles as well, that, that, those two trucks, the one is very old.
To make a decision?
Yeah, I think that you all need to, the equipment that we're talking about, or they're wanting to replace, I think we need to see that equipment in person, and like I said, doesn't need to be anything special, we just need to park out there and, you know, chill like fifteen minutes early and look at it, and then come in and we can have the meeting and have the discussion. Would council be okay with that?
I'm okay.
Well, what is, these particular vehicles used for?
Also, we're replacing, historically, the street trucks are the most, uh, that's why you say this, we are, uh, the street trucks, trucks are really, I mean, they, they have asphalt in them, they're, you know, very trees, so, they're ones that get the most beat up, I guess, is a nice way to put it. Uh, so, historically, they go to the water, the new ones go to the water department, the water trucks go to the street department. So it's the, the street trucks that get to the point where the doors are falling off, um, the, you know, transmissions are bad, all, you know, those, so those are the most worn trucks are in the street department. So we follow them through water into the, into streets, from, you know, so we use the, the street trucks that are basically broken in, and then they, they get them in the street department.
Our time, but we're transferring it. Hey, you know what street truck you're talking about? The one that's the ninety-seven one? Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
But if they do need replacement, like your suggestion to put them, you know, to option them off, at least we can get some return. Not very much, but more than likely, but at least we can get something returned.
I actually don't know. Well, what do we do with our vehicles after we get, through using them? Do we auction them, or do we send them out? Okay, okay, but we don't auction them here, we send them...
Um, no, um, they've done them here about when Gary was here?
Yes.
Oh, all the way back with Gary, okay, it's Gary.
He hired an auctioneer and they, they did that.
Well, at least we did get something off of them.
In fact, I, I wanna call him so I can get the number of that one auctioneer that he used.
That's right.
Those are just...
These are, those, everything else is things that they would, that they would like or need replaced over the next five years, so they want you to see it right now, so you can understand, you're making this budget, what's coming up next year, what they're gonna be asking for next year, or various things they're asking for next year, so...
Here we need a backhoe, at least one. That's two... What do you, what's the backhoe going for, Rob?
Two-hundred thousand dollars.
It says two-hundred.
I thought it was a street sweeper.
No, here, on page three.
Oh, okay.
Backhoe, two-hundred.
Next, she's gonna need two-hundred-and-seventy thousand.
But if he takes only one truck instead of two...
Again, you're getting back a hobbling, hobbling the folks that need those tools to work.
Yeah, but they're in the deficit in their budget, too, so that's the problem.
They're in deficit in their budget, we haven't discussed their budget at all. We know, and normally we don't, and normally we just discuss the general fund side of things, 'cause the, their side is more of a absolute must-need or don't-need kind of a thing. With general fund, we have more play with what's actually available.
And, and they're actually more in the hole because, um, if you're looking at the budget... And, and they're actually more in the hole because, um, if you're looking at the budget, the five ninety-eight that we're supposed to be getting, um, that's already used up, and that's for the generators.
Yeah, and we gotta get those generated, we don't have a choice. But, yeah.
Was that used on renting the generators?
No, no, that wasn't all rental. That, some of that was rental, not all that was rental. This is actually, we took purchase, because remember the generators were gonna be close to a million dollars or something like that. And we do, we have the, the generators on, you know. Oh, let's see here. Um, two generators for the Edwards well, that's three oh nine, and then we have a generator for War Horse Tower, which is two hundred, uh, one ninety-seven.
All that money is actually paying for those generators. Yes, okay. Okay, so it didn't get wasted away. It really is getting us those three.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, we're still gonna get it, but remember there's the, the other associated, um... It's just, it's not that straight clear-cut, you know?
But it's not, because we had to get all the...
Panels we done, all that stuff, so everything.
Blackened out of the budget.
So, and we knew that, we knew when we got the money, that that money was, you know, it was great that we had it, but we knew that it was gonna probably all be eaten up with those generators.
Didn't come out of our bank account right away, it was, that was.
And, and I'm just gonna add this, and if I wasn't doing my job, we would've never gotten that five hundred and ninety-eight, though.
We know that. You saved us on that.
And, and it's not personal, it's just, it's not personal, I just wanted to add that. It's just that, um... It's a lot of jobs for one person, but that's, that's all. It's just a lot.
Uh, well, Flipper initially cut seventy thousand, so we'll slow cap on here. Um, we're just gonna go ahead and, if there's nothing else, we go to informational. The only thing informational is the fact that, uh, we have cybersecurity training. Uh, does there anything other informational other than just the cybersecurity training?
That, if y'all can just go on. I think Josh already set, has already done the training.
Emails, don't plug USBs into your computers.
It's the same one that we had last time, I think.
Email, yeah. Yeah, they haven't updated it.
So we just have to watch the video.
That's it. Let me know once you've watched it, because then we, we have to send it, we have to report to, um...
We did this last year.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, yeah.
So, and not just us, it's everybody.
We have to deal with the school district, and so is that sort of, is that certification viable?
Just provide us with your certificate, yes. Yeah.
All right, so anything else informational, though? I know we talked earlier, but I think that was the only thing that we talked about informational. So...
Uh, Mayor, is it allowed to bring things up to informational, or should we wait till the next meeting? I was just gonna ask, uh, because I had some calls, uh, about, um, some property, uh, and about an appraiser. Do we hire an appraiser? Or for a property that I think, uh, Fred Morales was interested in, and something about, uh...
Yeah, um, uh, Tom was reaching out to Sam Noble, for the one for Fred Morales.
That's good, I'm glad they reached out. Well, and he says for Fred, we, we understand the system. I, I hate to say it's for Fred, because it's not. The system is, we've gotta pay, there has to be an open, open bid on it. Um, is anybody else gonna want that property aside of Fred? I highly doubt it. It's, but that's, he and Fred understands the system, too.
So what's the status at this point on that property?
What we had, that they've reached out to the appraiser. It has to be appraised.
Well, I'll call Tom tomorrow to see. I know he was reaching out to Sam Noble for him to, um, like he did with the airport.
Okay, in all fairness, right now, appraisals are taking eternity. Uh, figure, uh, figure a basic appraisal is probably taking almost a month. And that's just, that's just because they claim they're backed up. I don't know what their deal is. I don't know, I think...
I don't know, two years.
I, I know, it's still, it's COVID. COVID just... Ride that train as far as it will go, it's COVID. Um, but yeah, so, don't expect anything necessarily quick. Well, and I'm sure that, that Fred, Fred knows that, too, because he just got through buying property not that long ago, so...
I know for a fact that, uh, I think we tried to reach out to an appraiser a while back. I think when we were at a meeting at the county building, that's been a while. That was one of the processes we were gonna do.
We didn't approve it until more recently.
More recently.
Yeah, we didn't approve it until July's meeting, which would've been... No, I think it was the July meeting is when we finally, because we had, we had Rob make sure he didn't need it, so it was July. So you're talking, it's probably been since the twenty-seventh of... It's, it's been basically a month, but don't be surprised that it's taking.
But is it in your district, the property, that there, so if once, uh, possibly if Tom gets ahold of Sam, if they could reach out to David, so that they, you know, they can give him a timeline?
He talked to me today about it.
Tell him to stop being a bitch. Did we get the lights? He got, yes, he got his street lights. He says, I don't think they're installed yet, but everything's done to get them there.
Good, good.
So, I, I just been out of, out of the, the puzzle here, lady.
I think he spoke, I spoke with Gina, so he, um, spoke with the gentleman that had concerns, and they worked it out, so that was...
They moved it way up the street from that, that neighbor, so...
And honestly, that was too far down the street, so that wasn't even close to where he was asking for them originally. It's totally fine, so, yeah, that's been, that's been taken care of and now that the deal's been on.
And I had another call today about the grass ordinance, uh, you know, it was posted on Facebook, and, uh, so... What's, uh, because it had also, um, debris on there, even though it said, "Cut grass ordinance", the whole ordinance had about the debris, and so, um, we're looking at like what, where I lead, and I may have missed that, because I wasn't here for that, for the meeting, but the property, uh, with, uh, behind Wishel and Peck, and then, uh, there was, uh, the property behind the city park in District Two. Have they redeemed that, or what's the process, what's the, you know, what's the, uh, timeline on that? Or, right, because I think TCEQ was called, um, that property behind Wishel and Peck, and then they have across the street, they have all those cars and debris also, and I think, had, had the city sent out notices on that one, it's...